All right.
Yeah.
Do you have?
Called orders.
CJ, well, you see the category. Good, okay. It being six o'clock or thereabouts, I hereby call to order this special meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission on July fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Over.
Mine.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I hear you.
We'll try that again. Um, yes, I call to order this special meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for July fourteenth, twenty twenty one. It is a special meeting because it would ordinarily be scheduled Wednesday of next week. Okay, uh, Sherry, would you call a roll, please?
Chair Qualese.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Swift.
Here.
Commissioner Trent is absent. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, uh, pledge of allegiance. Jake, would you lead us, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, public communications is time set aside for people who wish to talk about items of city business that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone in the building or in the waiting room to speak on public comment, or public communications, excuse me? All right. Well, then, let's move directly into the big hitter tonight. Item one, the draft, second draft housing element, and Lucas, if you'll take us through that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, if I could have, I've got a brief PowerPoint that I want to kind of go through, um, and then, uh, I'll have an opportu- there'll be an opportunity for the consultants to also speak on some of the pieces that have been added since our last meeting in June.
Okay.
So, first of all, I want to say first of all, I want to say thank you for, uh, for taking the time, Commission, for reviewing this, uh, providing comments. Um, we received officially two comments from two commissioners, both Chair Qualese and Vice Chair Nolan, um, specifically asking for revisions. But in addition to that, at the last meeting, there were verbal comments received by all commissioners, and those had been looked at as well and revised up to this point.
Great.
And just, just so you know as well, we won't be going through the entire document. Really, we're focusing on where we had stopped and then moving forward.
That was somewhere in section five?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a specific page in which we would start, which is really the housing impediments section and then, and then forward. Um, as a, I just want to kind of go over the history of where we've been up to this point. If you could go to slide two, please. So, as this commission will remember, we had that kickoff to the housing element that took place in May, at the very beginning of May. And at that meeting, it really kind of gave an opportunity to, to ask a lot of different varying questions to the, to the consultant, to kind of get an understanding of, of what this, this next cycle, you know, leaning in, leaning forward from the fifth cycle, which is where we're at currently, into the sixth cycle, and the revisions that we're seeing here as a part of what, what, um, new, uh, laws have come forward, what new regulations have come forward that are demanding upon this, this housing element for us to, to move forward. Now, they, they talked briefly about that the housing element itself is a required element that requires updates every eight years. If you don't meet that cycle, then it's every four years. There's a lot of good information that was provided at that meeting. Then we move forward with something referred to as the overlay site inventory for the housing element, and that really is in favor of and supporting what's referred to as RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And RENA itself is something that SCAG through HCD, obviously through, through the state's office, uh, had provided a number. And that number for this city, for Ojai, um, per SCAG, when they divvied up all the numbers, fifty-three. That's the number we're looking at. So, we looked at, uh, overlay sites, um, identified sites for, for consideration, sites for removal, and, and that was really a focused effort. It wasn't about the whole housing element at that point. We were looking at really kind of one different, one specific area and talking through those sites. And then that brought us forward to the housing element as a first draft red line. Now, there was a lot of, there was a substantial amount of effort that went forward with both the consultant and with staff in terms of working through that, that red line. Um, it was, and as the commission had requested, we did a red line, but I'll just tell you right now, it was three times as, as time consuming as we had anticipated. But it also provides a really good foundation for what was there previously versus what's proposed. Um, I had warned the commission at that time that there would be a lot of, of red, uh, and that's, that's what we ended up seeing. A lot of good comments came from that. A lot of, uh, we really kind of got into the weeds on some things, which is good because that allowed the, the consultant to go back and make, um, substantial revisions. That then has led us to the revised draft red line version of the housing element that's before this commission tonight. Um, next slide, please. So, our schedule moving forward, uh, is kind of interesting because at this point, um, per state regulations and guidelines, the housing element, if the commission, uh, recommends with the revisions or any of the revisions that come forward tonight, to move forward with this, we can then submit to HCD. We can make those final revisions and go to HCD, and that is a sixty-day clock. And I've had conversations with our consultant who have submitted several, um, uh, several housing elements for other cities, and what we're finding is it's not a thirty-day, it's not a forty-five day. It truly is sixty days. Uh, even though they've staffed up, HCD has staffed up, it's still sixty days. I don't know that I, it may be fifty-nine, but more than likely, we can expect sixty-day review on this. Uh, concurrent with that, we're going to start the EIR addendum process. We're going to start that EIR environmental review process, um, as early as next week and potentially sooner. So, we're, I've already talked to the consultant about when that can start, and that can start concurrent with what we've got going on here with submitting to HCD. And then, in the interim, we have opportunities to have city council weigh in at this point, and we're looking forward to that. Uh, it'll more than likely be scheduled in August, September, but that's kind of the timeline we're looking at. There is a public hearing requirement both for Planning Commission, so it has to return back to Planning Commission as, as an official public hearing. Um, at this point, it's not even a required public hearing. We're going above and beyond to make sure that we're getting the full gamut of public input, um, at this point, but it will be an official public hearing with a, an official draft with HCD comments, revisions to those, revisions to the housing element based on HCD's comments. Um, and you'll be seeing that we're looking at a tentative date of, um, September fifteenth. And remind, I just want to remind the, the commission that this is a tentative schedule. It is subject to, to change and adjustments and some fudging, uh, depending on what happens with HCD, uh, the EIR addendum in terms of that review process, um, moving forward. I've highlighted the fifteenth over here on the right-hand side. I don't think anybody can see that. It's way too small, but that's October fifteenth, and that is a Friday, and that is our, that is our deadline. That's what we're shooting for. That's what this schedule is shooting for. It's pretty aggressive, but I think very much doable given the amount of information that we've received and the public input we've received at this point. And then, obviously, city council is the legislative body on this, and they would be looking to adopt, potentially looking at October twelfth. Next slide, please. So, let's just say we don't meet these dates. Uh, there are penalties to not meeting our housing element deadline. There was a Senate bill that came forward in two thousand seventeen, SB thirty-five. That process allows for development improvement without city action. Um, in two thousand seventeen, when this SB, uh, thirty-five came forward, that's the process to allow a housing developer to invoke state override of local permitting authority. That's, that's a pretty hard sting, at least on our, our end. Um, it takes away a lot of the authority that we have, uh, locally. In addition to that, the city of Ojai would no longer be eligible for a range of grants. I'm only identifying two here, SB two and LEAP. We already have those in, but that's not to say that the money that's still remaining could be stripped away. Uh, and there's other grants out there as well. Um, Public Works is on, on a regular basis, reaching out and, and going forward with grants. The first question that they're going to be asking is if we have a compliant housing element. If we don't meet these dates, there's potential for that being an issue. And then, additionally, courts could suspend, um, the city of Ojai zoning authority. That's kind of an extreme case, but I think it's worth noting, um, that there are certain circumstances. I was just hearing some of those examples, um, today with the consultant, and I think, um, Amber can speak to that as well, uh, at some point. But there are examples where that's happened, and that's, that's concerning, um, certainly, and it's obviously extreme cases. And then lawsuits may lead to development approval and awarding legal fees. Obviously, if we're going through litigation with some sort of nonprofit, there is the potential for planned legal fees. I mean, that's, that's a substantial cost, um, that city's dying. So, with those, I wanted to highlight the, the kind of the overall timeline in terms of what we've been looking at, the timeline moving forward, and then what happens if we don't meet these timelines? I mean, there are penalties. And eight years ago, I don't know what the, all these, I mean, obviously, SB thirty-five wasn't even, um, wasn't even, wasn't even a thought. It is now. So, during the fifth cycle, I don't know that there was necessarily as many of these critical penalties that we're seeing here, um, moving forward into the sixth cycle. So, with that, I know, uh, I'd like to have Jamie and/or Amber speak to some of the, some, kind of the overview of the changes that have taken place to this housing element from the, and Amber and Jamie are with Ramey and Associates, or not Ramey and Associates, with Veronica Tam and Associates, and can speak, uh, really, pretty intelligently. They've, they've gone through quite a few of these housing elements at this point, submitting to HCD as well. Also, I'd like for them to talk a little bit about the most recent, um, addition, which is a part of the new requirements, which is the appendix D, which is the affirmatively furthering fair housing, or the AFFH, as they'll be referring to tonight.
Great. Thank you so much, Lucas. Um, it's good to be back. I think, yeah, I'm just going to briefly go over the biggest change that we've, uh, added since we spoke last, and that's the, um, affirmatively furthering fair housing appendix. Um, so this is based on AB six eight six, which was passed in two thousand seventeen. Um, it requires jurisdictions to affirmatively further fair housing through meaningful actions combating discrimination, segregation, um, and promote, uh, fair, uh, access to fair housing opportunities. Um, prior to two thousand nineteen, um, AFFH was only required for jurisdictions that received HUD, uh, grants directly, um, jurisdictions of fifty, with populations of fifty thousand or, or above. Um, but since two thousand nineteen, it's been extended to all jurisdictions. So, all jurisdictions are required to, um, complete this, uh, fair housing assessment or, um, regional impediment AI. That's usually what the county does. Um, so the assessment of fair housing requires an analysis of the city's enforcement and outreach efforts, segregation patterns, racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, access to opportunities, and disproportionate housing needs. And the city is required to include a list that prioritizes the contributing factors that are identified in that fair housing assessment and, um, implement programs to mitigate the issues identified. Um, programs, uh, uh, the programs typically, in many jurisdictions, including Ojai, um, are focused around sort of four general areas. Um, that's enforcement and outreach, uh, concentration of special needs groups, substandard housing conditions, which includes, includes aging housing, which is a problem in Ojai, and displacement of low-income residents due to economic pressures. Um, I don't know if, uh, Lucas would like me to go more in-depth about specifically what's in, um, the doc, in that, uh, fair housing appendix. I can go through that if, uh, if Lucas sees.
I, I think just giving a general overview of it, I think, is, is sufficient at this point. Um, additionally, I want to, to note that, that we have received four public comments. Um, those comments are from Bill Miley, from Ted Moore, from Jeff Starkweather, or Jeffrey Starkweather, and then also from a, a Leslie Hess. So, I want to make those public tonight as well.
Okay, we have all those. Any commissioners with questions for staff or the consultant before we hear from the public? Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, please go ahead.
Uh, just a question, um, just kind of on the format for tonight. So, if we have public comment next, then I'm assuming that as a commission, we'll kind of go back and discuss and, you know, come up with a recommendation. Okay.
Yeah.
So, in other words, um, there'll be more time for us to ask questions and to dialogue.
Oh, yes.
That'll be good. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Swift, anything?
No, I don't.
Not at this time. Okay. Commissioner Lottis?
Uh, so, just to clarify, so the, are we doing a separate EIR for the housing element, or is it just going to, are we doing one combined EIR for the entire general plan? I'm just, I, I'm a little bit confused about that.
Yeah, so the, the, the general plan update is going to have its own independent standalone EIR. Um, there was an EIR done for the housing element for the fifth cycle, and that is what we're using, and then we're, we're basically building onto that with the addendum.
Okay, okay.
Just, it'd just be an addendum for this one, but
Gotcha.
It will be a larger EIR, so the entire general plan.
Yes, it's been budgeted for that, too.
Okay, if we have no, no other current questions for staff or the consultants, I think it's time for public comment. And, um, before we start, I have, I have three cards. I'll call you up in the order in which I was handed the cards. Um, but I think one thing that probably needs to be said right now, just to kind of set the stage for what I anticipate, is three comments about the same topic. The, the existence of the large parcel at the west end of the city, whether it's in or not in the housing element this time, um, has no effect on whether or not development can or should or must take place, any sort of development on that property. Um, and so, whether it goes into HCD and gets thrown back because it's more than ten acres, or if it winds up being processed for a long time at HCD and they figure out a way to say yes, um, either way, right now, the city has far in excess of the space available for low, low-income housing and has shown a willingness already to be flexible in either zoning or other, other requirements and restrictions on housing in the city so that, for example, uh, Site Seven, which is currently zoned commercial, and in the, in the municipal code says you can't have a residence on there, it can be done by putting the SPL on it. But beyond that, it's not necessary to go any farther, in my opinion, with, with identifying additional space or a willingness on the part of the city to, to, um, encourage the development of low-cost housing, low-income housing, whatever you want to call it, affordable housing. So, uh, let's start with Jeffrey Starkweather. Please come up, sir. You have three minutes.
Thanks very much. Uh, I sent you a very detailed letter. I hope you've had a chance to review it. I'm not going to go over that in great detail. I just want to comment, so just on Chair.
Great comments, just for a second. Uh, number one, I don't believe that this is going to take a long time to review this particular fourteen acres. It's straightforward. It exactly meets the requirements, plain reading of the, of the regulations. Uh, secondly, it does give an entitlement, which makes a difference. And, um, and so I, I do think it's important that we include it. And I disagree with the idea that, oh, we've met the minimum. I think HCD, the governor, our legislators, our council member want to show that Ojai is really committed, because we have done absolutely zero until now. Um, but why, so why am I speaking, since I've already given you a letter in details? I'm speaking because I feel I have a moral, and we have a moral, and civil obligation to speak for the forty-three percent of the households who are cost overburdened here in Ojai. We need to speak for the fifty-four percent of the households who are eligible for affordable housing, the eighty-three percent of the people that work in all our businesses who have to commute in here because they can't afford affordable housing, the teachers, the staff, uh, school staff, government employees who cannot afford to purchase a home here. The median price is now nearly a million for Ojai. The parents and students of our public schools who have seen a decline in the school offerings because we're losing students, because people with children can't afford to live in Ojai. But I'm not here to help this board meet some kind of bureaucratic obligation to HCD, and I'm not here to come up with some strategy so they won't take more time to look at this. I'm here because I grew up here in a working-class home that my parents owned. I went to public schools with kids of all incomes. There were parents who were architects. There were parents who were lawyers like myself. There were parents who were principals, people, they're business people. But there were also people like my dad, who was a shift foreman of the chemical plant, and my next-door neighbor's dad, who was a janitor. We all went to the same public school. We need to get back to that. Um, finally, I'm here because I feel the need to convey the message to my friends and my fellow citizens of Ojai. We do not need to decide between affordable housing for those who need it and the values we hold about community character, about environmental protection, climate mitigation, sustainability, uh, open space, small-town character. Because this property, this proposal, this developer who's willing to listen to people, they want to embody all of those characteristics in this development. We have an opportunity to develop an integrated model green development with mixed income, mixed housing types, mixed use. We have an opportunity here today to meet this crisis in our community, not merely by, um, barely meeting the standard, but by enhancing a, by, Scott, sorry, by providing the development that will not only meet but enhance a sustainable character of our community by including, and you can do this by including this site in this development. Sorry, I stumbled at the end, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Uh, next, Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-eight. I sent each of you a detailed email listing why I believe the property, fourteen point one acres, deserves a very serious consideration for affordable housing overlay. Jeffrey Starkweather and I have joined Ted in advocating for this site to be overlaid with the SPL, and eventually developed into what we believe is it would be a wonderful mixed-income affordable housing development primarily for workforce housing. We know state housing in their official guidelines dated June twentieth, two thousand twenty, say any site over ten acres is not good, and lists their reasons. This, but this is a new criteria established in two thousand eight, seventeen, AB thirteen ninety-seven. But we have found in those state regulations, sections which allow, the state lists several options to plan such a large parcel, potentially making it work. To start with, section on page seventeen entitled Large Site, which offers an option. On page nine, under Best Practices, there's a list of features which get high marks for reviewers and tax credit committees. There are other sections which speak to the needs of a city as driving factors in the selection of sites. We see five key factors which are foundational for this request. One, the owners, the Carty family, have owned the property for a hundred and fifty years. We suggest, although we do not know the Carty family, that their decision is meant to add value to our city. Two, the Carty family selected EF Moen Company to represent them in this endeavor. Some of you may know Ted Moore, and his years of project design and construction, and know his hometown is Ojai. Three, the Cartys and Ted selected Peoples Self-Help Housing Corporation, which covers San Luis, Santa Barbara, and Ventura Counties, as the affordable nonprofit to design, build, and manage the community housing site. Some of you may know them. They're the best in the state, in my opinion. They have been in the active business for over fifty years and have developed and managed fifty-one-plus affordable housing sites. Four, the site has it all, its location, utilities, and community resources. They're all nearby by the bunch, hardly any environmental factors to mitigate, and enough land to make it a green value development. And number five, this affordable housing need is much larger than the small RENA number we got, fifty-three. Most of you know that people who live within our cities as renters, according to the recent community, American Community Survey, and you have tables in your housing draft, over forty-three percent of renters are paying thirty percent at least for their annual income to have a roof over their heads, and at least twenty percent of those folks are paying fifty percent to have a roof. They are cost-burdened by a major way. The need is way beyond fifty-three, closer to four hundred to five hundred, and this is a fair housing concern. The five factors, we believe, warrant serious consideration for an SPL overlay, in closing. We believe the Carty property is a one-of-a-kind site, which does not exist anywhere else in the city. Let's not pad off, pass up this choice opportunity to provide workforce housing to better the lives of folks who are cost-burdened by rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And Ted Moore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. Uh, you, you've heard the, the, the practical reasons, the emotional reasons. Uh, I wanted to just take a little bit different approach, okay? Yes, I've been a developer for many years, well over forty years. I've done a lot of projects all over the state, so, um, I think this is a unique situation, and, uh, because I've lived here and because of the relationships I have with, you know, capital sources, contractors, these are all critical considerations to take into account. I think I'm really uniquely qualified to do this. The interesting piece to me is that I want to say that if you look at what your, your charge is, what you're responsible to do, it's basically to determine sites to meet the RENA number. When, in fact, our world has changed quite a bit, and we, we've certainly heard that housing here is, you know, a million dollars a household. Who knew that the pandemic would drive it in such a way that has happened? Um, it's most extraordinary. We've never seen this in our lifetimes. Uh, so I think you'll have to be reflective of that, and not just to select a certain number of sites, maybe it's eight times the number, you know, five times the number, whatever you've been directed to do, but you have to take into account the, the real world and what's going on, as well as sites that have a unique grouping of characteristics, people involved, to make it happen, you know? And, and I think you have to look at that. You have to look beyond just the simple, you know, facts that you have been presented and the path that you've been given. It's like, you have to reach beyond that in this case. You have to use some judgment in, in that regard, in that direction. And I want to say that what I handed out, I'm doing a medical project in Arvin, California. It's a very low-income, basically about a ninety-five It's a very low income, basically about a 95% Hispanic community. I sold the shopping center back in San Diego and I invested in an opportunity zone in that community. And I had a, I have an agreement that I'm working with, with a really good-sized nonprofit that's going to open a medical clinic there. And through that process, I got to meet this woman, Jessica Hayes, at the HCD. And so what I did is I shared with Jessica, you know, kind of my frustration or this whole issue around the 10 acres, okay? I mean, is it real or not, you know? Or is there a resolution? And you saw the comments. She said, well, I've done lots of housing elements. She was a consultant in the private sector before. State hired her. And she said, let me pass it on to the housing policy people. So I went to this guy, Paul McDougall, and you saw his comment back. He said, yeah, this is something we can work out. I'm, you know, basically he made it sound like, sure, we can work this out. And so I haven't heard from the guy. I just got back from vacation today. But it seems like there's not a real issue around this 10 acres, is really what I'm trying to say. So those are my thoughts. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this item? Well, no, if you need the questions. Carolyn Gold, Gold Washer. Okay. Please step up, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Gold Washer. I live at 302 North Signal Street, Apartment B in Ojai, and I've lived there for five years. And I attended a conference or a discussion on the 27th of June about affordable housing. That's why I'm here. So one of my questions is, for a person whose only income is SSI or SSDI, which is $904 per month, where in Ojai can that person live? Some of our Ojai homeless people are in this category, and some of them are already living in Whispering Oaks, which is a facility built for senior and disabled low-income folks. However, the waiting list, last I checked, was about five years long, and they only open the waiting list to new applicants once, one week a year. So this is not an especially viable option, although a lot of people are living there and I'm sure it's a fine place. Maybe another one like that might be built. But also, another comment is that many ladies that I know have a total income, retired income and total income of less than $1,400 a month. And some of them are living in rented rooms in houses that they share with someone else that they don't know, but they get to know them. So those are questions and comments. What I would like to share is that there's an old-fashioned idea that could be revived here in Ojai, and as far as I know, there is no, there are no boarding houses. I used to work in one years and years and years ago as a cook. And the, it could be that an already existing building could be somehow made to be, if it was permitted within the code, to be a nonprofit boarding house for people of low income, where each person would have their, or a couple would have their own room and share a bath down the hall, eat a main meal with a group, and have access to a kitchen for breakfast and the other meal. So, and a refrigerator, access to a refrigerator. So that's how, how it was set up. The way, the one I worked in, I also happened to talk to Susie Francina about this a week or so ago, and she said she happened to have worked in a boarding house once, two, years and years ago in San Francisco. So I know that it can be done. The other, and a lot of people who live in boarding houses and even in Whispering Oaks don't have cars that need to be parked. They ride public transportation or bicycles, or they walk. So that needn't be a consideration. So those are my, my comments. Although, can I say one more thing? I think that this idea of a big place, I drove by it, half of it could be a park, the other half could be housing, whatever. I don't know, but that's my comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your, your taking the time to come speak to the commission. Is there any, is there anyone else present in the room or in an electronic waiting room who wants to speak? Sheri, if so, call them up.
V.L. Peters is on.
Okay. Mr. or Ms. Peters? Did you have something you wanted to say to the commission, or are you just signing in to listen? Still muted.
Okay, sorry. I signed in to listen. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate people who come to listen. There aren't that many of them. Thank you, ma'am.
We have Ms. Wiseman next.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Denise, you're on mute.
There. No? Still muted.
I am only here to listen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your taking the time to listen in.
We have Steve Colome.
Okay. Steve?
I'm just unmuted. Thank you for listening. My comments are that in an ideal world, a general plan and its various elements should be based on a community's goals and objectives, and it should contain policies and programs to meet the needs of that jurisdiction. To date, the housing element discussion in Ojai has been focused on meeting requirements of the state and in avoiding possible penalties for missing state-imposed deadlines. We have not yet addressed in any meaningful way the needs and future of housing in Ojai, nor have we constructively discussed how to assure a measure of affordability. The housing element law has been with us for over 50 years, administered by HCD and with housing targets spelled out in RENA numbers. Yet housing in this state continues to be unaffordable. So does this mechanism work? And in this, I'm really impugning the inflexibility of the state and its requirements, and not here, the staff or our consultants who have worked hard on this draft. Distracted, I think, by state requirements, we fail, in my opinion, to address specific and unique housing needs of our community. Let's consider some of the demographic data contained in the draft housing element. Nearly half of the residents are renters. Nearly 60% of those renters are housing cost burdened. Our RENA housing targets for low and very low-income residents is only 22 units. If we were in fact to meet that target, which there's no assurance we would, what impact would that have on housing affordability needs? Clearly de minimis. Also, the city of Ojai is largely built out, and our housing stock is older, with most residential buildings over 50 years old. So what indeed are our underlying challenges? Affordability is clearly an issue, but market forces are not going to solve that challenge without intervention and probably public-private partnerships. Building age is clearly an issue that relates to health and safety of occupants, particularly in rental income and units owned by persons unable to afford cost-effective capital improvements. The draft housing element mentions lead paint contamination in older homes, but let me add other issues that are of similar health and safety concern to our older homes. That includes asbestos in HVAC ducts and cottage cheese ceilings, poorly maintained or malfunctioning gas appliances with potentially hazardous levels of combustion gases in homes. I've done surveys of this for the major utilities up and down the state, finding cracked fireboxes, blocked vents, and inadequate ventilation of cooktops. We also have missed opportunities for cost-effective energy conservation. This is low-hanging fruit. Simple measures like caulking, ceiling insulation, updated appliances and double-pane windows that have been available for decades and that could reduce residential heating and cooling costs by 30% and are cost-effective with paybacks of as short as one to two years. Yet those with limited means and on fixed income may lack the ability to budget for those improvements. I've got other points that relate to these issues, but I just want to conclude by saying that all of these programs and policies would have a greater meaning and impact on our lives and our residents than simply meeting somewhat arbitrary state RENA standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else in the waiting room, Sheri? Okay, I think we've exhausted the, the audience present here, so. Thank you. So I guess we will close public communications and bring this back to the commission for discussion. I would like to ask a couple of clarifying questions of staff, since the, the issue here seems largely to be centered around whether the 14-acre parcel is included in the SPL and RENA numbers. If, if the, if Mr. Moore and his client wish to develop that parcel in whatever way, affordable, partially affordable, doesn't matter, is the process any different if the parcel is in this SPL list or if it's not in the list? Is the, is the process with the city to do that development any different?
In terms of the application process, a concept review would be, would be their, would be their path forward at this point. In terms of it being included, staff concluded the analysis and doesn't see it qualifying. So that's, that's where we stand right now.
But does it make any difference in terms of the process, how it would be received by the city, how the city, the staff, and the planning commission, and ultimately, I presume, the, the city council, would they treat this case any differently if the parcel were on the SPL list than if it were not on the SPL list?
Treating it differently? I'm not sure what you, what you mean by that.
Would there be any difference in how the process would play out?
By being on the SPL zone, it's, it's basically an entitlement, is what they're being given.
Okay, okay.
Versus going through the public hearing process and, and presenting the overall proposal that we, that, that certainly Ted Moore and other individuals have discussed.
You know, to, okay, and I, I have nothing but good to say about the idea of developing the 14 acres in some fashion. My wife and I walk by there once or twice a week. But what I'm, what I'm asking is, if, if the, if, if this parcel were on the SPL list between now and October 15th, or if it were on the list after October 15th and didn't wind up in the draft that goes to HCD, would the process be any different for considering an application to be SPL overlay and application to do development of whatever sort? Is there any difference?
I mean, the process is relatively the, the same with the exception of there's a concept review if it's broken away from the housing element. Housing element would include, as a part of the environmental review, this, the 14-acre site that we're talking about. So it's either the consultant or the, the owner doing it independently, first seeing a concept review if they choose, or just moving forward with a proposal, which could have a myriad of zone changes, general plan amendments, design review, the whole gambit. Or it being included with the overlay as a part of the housing element in terms of that process. And that then basically ensures what was described earlier, which is an entitlement by right, meeting all the standards, it's a zone clearance.
There is a big difference. That's it, right there, Steve.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say if this is not on the SPL list that goes to HCD on October 15th, could it be on, could, could an SPL overlay be applied to that property at any other time?
Yes.
Because I get the, I get, I get the feeling that there's a sense among some in the community that if this isn't on the SPL list now, that no development can be done there of the sort that would be possible if an SPL overlay were applied, applied to the property.
Well, if that assumption is true, that's, that's an incorrect assumption because there is a separate path for a project of this nature.
We've had, we've had several of the new entries on the SPL list are just recently applied because people asked for it, I think.
I mean, I wasn't reaching out to anyone. Every single one of these, they reached out to me.
Okay. Okay.
I should, let me just clarify that point. Every single one of them either reached out to me or already pre-existing as a part of the overlay.
Right, right.
And then the housing element, which means you'd have to go back to HCD and a whole other process.
Do we have to?
Add it to the SPL, wouldn't you?
Yes, absolutely.
We have to go back to HCD if we put SPL on a different parcel?
No, you wouldn't have to go to HCD. What you would have is you'd have the legislative body reviewing that item as a legislative action. HCD is required as a part of the housing element. Amending the housing element itself as a part of a general plan amendment, because we're talking about a general plan amendment. Now, it happens to be the housing element that we're looking at making amendment. It's no different than a land, well, it is partially different because we have to get official certification from HCD for the housing element. But in terms of the process, the legislative action is still held by city council.
No matter when it happens?
Exactly.
Correct.
So you'd have to go back clearly, since HCD has to approve the housing element. If you were changing your housing element after the time period, after their review, they're gonna have to review it again.
I don't, I don't, I'm not.
So why, add anything you wanted to and they would never look at it?
Well, hold on a second. No, that's not necessarily true. I don't want necessarily get into debate here, but the reality is, is, and please speak up at the, at the podium because no one from the audience can hear you. Hold on a second. I'm responding to, to Mr. Starkweather here. The reality is, is that as a part of the certification to meet our RENA numbers, it's 53, that's our number, we're meeting that. Adding sites thereafter is a bonus. So if this project wants to move forward through concept review and go through our process, that's a bonus. But it also requires public hearings and legislative action.
And, and does not require a new review by HCD?
No. We're looking for certification. We're certified, unless there's sites coming off. Let's say, for instance, we have three or four sites that end up developing, that end up not doing housing or affordable housing, and suddenly our sites that we've, that we have in terms of a number is less than 53, then we're at issue, and we're looking at where we can potentially have sites that would get us above the 53.
Okay. Yes, please. Go ahead, sir.
By Lucas's own words, this is an entitlement to get this opportunity, okay? And it, it gives you a ministerial approval process. So it's a critically important point to get it done now. When he's talking about, yes, it's similar and I can go through concept review, I've been down that road in many, many cities, and it takes, you know, a couple of years, probably. This way, it gives me like a key that I can really start to put the pieces together. So it would be a mixed, mixed-use project, and I know I've got the housing element, you know, the affordable component. I've got two housing developers, you know, self-help housing and area authority of Ventura County, they both want to do projects. If I don't get this, then they're just gonna go off on the sideline and wait. And so it, it allows me to save a year or two, probably, to do this. So it is a critical factor to me to get it. So even what he says, yeah, you can go through the process, but it is, it is a long road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thoughts from the, from the commission? Oh, we were gonna, we were gonna pick up. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vice Chair Nolan. Did you raise your hand? There she goes.
Oops. There we go. Sorry, I'm muting. I did raise my hand. You know, initially when we had our previous commission meetings in regards to the housing element, I did bring up and expressed interest in this. element, I did bring up and expressed interest in this particular property being included in the SPL overlay. And I do realize it's over 10 acres. But there's an opportunity there, whether they have to subdivide or not, to do an affordable housing project. And there's so many benefits, I know some of the members of the public brought it before, but there's an opportunity for a green open space and a connection to the land conservancy property. It's adjacent to the transportation, the hospital, medical, a lot of work opportunities, including not even that far from the Ojai Valley Inn. So I personally would like to see it on there. And I just wanted to share something. In 2011, as a planning commissioner, with several other planning commissioners, and we had got approval from the city council and our city manager at the time, we actually wrote a grant to the Strategic Growth Council. And it was actually initially started with Complete Streets, but it included this particular property that we're discussing. And we actually included in our proposal workforce and senior housing and a green element, and that it was sustainable and had energy-efficient measures, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very similar to what we were talking about, and we did get approval from the city. And by the way, we didn't get the grant, we lost by one point, but we got majorly dinged, because at the time, the city was out of compliance with the housing element, interestingly enough. But I'm... So it's not a new idea, and I'm sure there have been others that have come forward throughout the years, you know, probably with something similar. But I just wanted to share that, and at the time, we did get city council approval and our city manager. And kudos we got received from the Strategic Growth Council, gave us a special meeting afterwards, how much they liked our project. That was just a component of it, was the development of that particular property. But anyway, I personally, I would like to see it included in the SPL overlay. I could go on, but I think that's enough for now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm wondering how, if one postulates that HCD is gonna throw out this entry from the SPL table, let's say, how much effort is it to put it in the table and let them throw it out? Is that a big effort? It seems to me it's an Appendix B, and it just requires a few words to go with... No, it's Appendix A. Part of Appendix A?
Commissioner Colesy.
Yes, please.
Real quick, just from the legal perspective, you know, staff has assembled the sites which meet the objective criteria in the HCD guidelines. This site doesn't meet the objective criteria as written. The SPL overlay zone sites were approved by this commission at a previous meeting. What's in front of this commission right now is the approval of and recommendation... I'm sorry, the recommendation to council about the approval of this part of the housing element.
This current draft.
Of this current draft of the housing element. I think, as Lucas pointed out at the very beginning, the October 15 deadline is a firm deadline. It may be subject to extension, but that's an HCD decision, not a city decision. If the city is not in compliance with the... and does not have a housing element that complies, by October 15, the city does run the risk of having projects that do not need to go through the process and are to be approved by right, because of all the state laws that have been passed since the fifth cycle, including sites that, you know, for any site that's currently approved in the SPL overlay zone, there will be no... there will be limited planning commission review, there will not be a CUP, there will not be design review. And so that's kind of the risk that, you know, that we run by not having an approved element by the 15th. And so, you know, staff has put together what is, you know, what is workable, and, you know, again, like Lucas said, the HCD has a 60-day review. And, you know, dealing with HCD, speaking personally from a... representing other clients, is an opaque process, and often a Byzantine process, and why things might get rejected, why things might get approved. And at this point, you know, what's before the commission is this particular element. I understand the arguments for, you know, and I get that, but, you know, I just want to remind the commission on that point, yeah.
And I'm just trying to clarify the playing field that we're on. If this parcel, if the commission this evening, say, decided that amongst other modifications to the housing element draft that we have, if the commission voted to add this parcel in Appendix B, the site inventory, one, how much effort would that take on the part of staff and the consultant? And two, is it your legal advice to the commission that putting this parcel on would make our housing element non-compliant?
So on question one, I'll defer to...
That's a question for each of you.
On question one, I'll defer to Lucas. On question two, again, without, you know, having some understanding of the HCD process, I don't believe that at this point, including a parcel that is non-compliant and doesn't meet the objective criteria is something that'll work in the city's favor. And it may delay approval of the housing element. But again, I can't say that for certain, of course, because HCD... But that would be, you know, it's clear, it doesn't meet the objective criteria, which is something that staff has come up with. So, you know, it's an... I mean, setting it up so that HCD simply rejects it, you know, I don't know what'll happen. I can't tell you what'll happen from a legal perspective as to what HCD will do with that particular site. All I can say is that it doesn't meet the objective criteria.
Right. But would rejecting that site invalidate the entire housing element?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
I agree with that. Speaking to the timeline point that I think was asked as question number one.
Another half of my questions.
Right. So from a timing standpoint, while it seems simple, sure, let's just add it within the appendix that we have before us, I believe that's Appendix A.
It's B.
That's only one piece to that puzzle. There are several other items that, because of this commission making and taking a stand on those various overlay sites, it compromises and delays that review. There are several, and I would say within Appendix D, there's what, 40-something pages? However many maps that we have identified there, and then cross-references, we've gotta go back in and modify that. So there's a considerable amount of time that staff would have to spend, in addition to the consultant spending. I'm saying it's probably at least a two-week delay, at the very least. That's on the low end.
Also, what about the EIR supplement?
So from an EIR standpoint, adding that in...
This is a big site.
It's a larger site. Basically doubles the number of units that we're talking about here as an addendum. I can't tell you what that's going to do in terms of how we address that from an addendum standpoint, but you're doubling the units.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure everybody understands...
Yeah, no, it's important that you understand what that means.
Impact of doing it or not doing it might be. We've heard about the impact on people who want to move ahead with the development, and I'm not yet completely understanding how much of a delay there might be in the development.
Well, the delay in the development is not really the... The delay in development is entirely a separate issue. The issue really is, is that by choosing to include a site that doesn't meet the objective criteria is the delay in the approval of the housing element, is I think what staff is addressing. And so, you know, again, speaking from a legal perspective, it's the risk that the city runs in not having the housing element approved by a time where it's by October 15th. And so...
Submitted by October 15th.
Submitted by... I'm sorry, submitted by October 15th. I misspoke. But submitted by October 15th. So, you know, I think the staff has kind of laid out what impacts, say, doubling the amount of sites would have on the EIR addendum process and on the maps as they currently exist, so.
Okay. Okay. Just so we all understand the impacts here. Yes, Mr. Starkweather?
I brought a detailed memo, I brought a detailed legal memo. Pointing out why this objectively met compliance. I have not heard anything from staff or the lawyer why it's not compliant, because I think it objectively is compliant. If you go through the rules, which I did in great detail, and I hope people read it, it meets those plain language criteria. They have three steps that you're supposed to can go through if you're a larger site. And it specifies what some of those criteria are, like having a developer, having a plan, having... And then they looked at the best practices. It meets all those objective criteria. Those are our objective. I don't know what subjective criteria there could be. So I'm just puzzled. The only one I have heard is that we haven't done a split zone before. We haven't done this before. That was the only one that Mr. Seabert mentioned when he was at our forum. The other, the second alternative, this one exactly meets that standard. So I don't think it's correct for you to be making the decision on the basis of saying that this is not compliant. It is compliant with the regulations. The other issue's fine, but it is compliant. Thank you.
He also was willing to reduce it to 10 acres.
And I respectfully disagree. Here's what I could do as a side note in going through this. I know that Ted Moore had spoken with someone from HCD. I could reach out to them and have that conversation. But it would be the individual that we're gonna be working with specifically through either Amber, Jamie, or Veronica, when they submit to HCD. Not someone through... I mean, HCD is a large institution. We're talking about them staffing up. Veronica talked about that at the last meeting. I don't know who they talked to. I'm not sure what level they're at in terms of what review criteria they've used to look at that, or if they've even understood the entire proposal as it's been presented. So I think it's important that they have all of the facts.
Okay. Well, unless other commissioners have comments...
I have a comment. I mean, if we're having commission discussion, right?
We are, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I am very sensitive to the timing issue and getting this in. I understand that it's more pro forma, and there are other larger issues and policies and things that I've touched on before that I have concerns about, but I understand the need to get this in. I think there's ways to probably come back around and deal with some of those larger policy issues subsequently. And... But with this particular site, I actually have reservations. I do not feel comfortable with setting up as an entitlement because of the size. And frankly, I, and I said this when we looked at the SLP map, I'm very happy with having numerous parcels that are dispersed throughout the city where we could presumably have multiple numbers of affordable homes or affordable housing projects on a number of different sites that are in different neighborhoods, that are smaller scale. I am definitely concerned about the scale of this project. And having it come through with kind of a blanket entitlement that diminishes our discretion on it, I think, and again, there's nothing holding this project back from carrying its own water, you know, and getting through the process. But I am not, at this point, I said it was premature earlier, but because of its size in particular, I would not be ready to include this on the SPL map. So that's where I stand.
We have one on each side. Commissioner Swift, any thoughts on the matter?
Yeah. We need affordable housing now, and Mr. Moore is ready to do it now. Nobody else is interested in the other sites, and they could sit for a long time, and nothing's done. So I think we should give it a shot and take the risk and put it on the SPL and see how it goes.
Can I respond to that, to Commissioner Swift's comment? So when I say each, and Ted Moore is also in that same conversation, each individual property owner that has reached out to me, or representative of the property owner that has reached out to me, has identified that they are certainly interested and have lots of questions in terms of how they can put affordable housing on their site. Especially the new ones that are being proposed have started the conversations on who do I need to talk to? What does that process look like once these entitlements go and come into place? So it's not that they would just sit. Granted, if you look at our last two cycles, the fourth and the fifth cycle, how many affordable housing projects got built? I can tell you the answer's zero. I don't know that there was the excitement that I'm seeing from these particular property owners to develop these sites. We are at a critical juncture. I think the state understands that. Certainly, this community understands it. I think the council understands that. Certainly, this commission understands and appreciates it. But also, we've got to be careful in terms of how that's done. This is an entitlement, so careful consideration is given, review is given. That's the reason for these guidelines, these state standards that are in place. So just keep that in mind.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Please, go ahead.
Are you freaking... Oh, sorry. My name is Carolyn Goldwasser. I live in an apartment building, and right across the street from another very large apartment building with lots of children. And there is a parking lot there, of course, for the cars, but no clear, easy place for the kids to play outside, so they're often kind of running up and down the sidewalk. So I don't know if it's of any significance in this particular thing you're talking about over by the 14-acre thing, if part of that area could be designated as public park immediately adjacent to the high-density housing that you're proposing for families that might live there, and maybe even a boarding house or something could be built as part of the high-density housing. I also wanted to know, is it permitted that there could be such a thing as a boarding house, a nonprofit boarding house in the city of Ojai? Or is that not... I haven't seen any here, so I was wondering.
I'd have to defer to Lucas on that one, on...
Okay. So those are my...
He knows better the details of the code. I've not seen the phrase "boarding house" anywhere.
No, I'm not seeing it within the code either, in terms of whether it's a definition or providing a path forward regarding that type of housing.
Like a long-term B&amp;B almost.
Right.
What about... I mean, it sounds like it's really similar to an SRO, though, standing, a single-room occupancy kind of a development, so...
Well, usually it's...
So we have regulations in play for that.
I think there's opportunity for that kind of thing.
Yes. And that is actually required already through state standards and requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Bill?
Can I speak?
Please, go ahead. I think at this point, all four of you will have spoken twice, right?
Yes, correct. Bill Miley, I'd like to ask our attorney to look at page 17 of the guidelines, June 10, 2020. It talks about step 3B, sites larger than 10 acres. This has to do with meeting the criteria, which he says we don't. But this particular section says we can. It says parcels larger than 10 acres don't necessarily make it, unless there is other evidence, that's the last line, that the site is realistic and feasible for lower-income housing. And then in the square box, it says definition of a large site. Mr. Moore has said he is willing to reduce the size of the affordable site to 10 acres or less. And that's what this box speaks about. It says, if the specific boundaries of the large site is identified to accommodate RNA numbers for lower-income folks, is less than 10 acres, then the large-site analysis doesn't be required. It's implied that it would fall under the rules. So I would suggest that it does meet this criteria, and it should be considered for 10 acres and less.
From a legal point of view, then, if an SPL overlay...
From a legal point of view then, if an SPL overlay were applied to this parcel, would it apply to the entire parcel or to some portion of the parcel?
So, and I'll, Lucas, you can correct me here, but I believe that the SPLA applies to the entire parcel. Right now, this, the parcel exists as one parcel.
Right.
So that, that's the whole point of a concept review would be to offer this, I mean, off, offer the site to be, you know, fit this criteria, you, you would hive off the 10, 10 acres, and that would be part of the concept review. As it exists today, as it exists at this moment, that, the situation that's being described doesn't exist. And so it doesn't meet the objective criteria as it exists today. That could change in the future, and we could, you know, if, if, if things were to change and we would, and the, the, the changes were to happen to the site, we could add to the SPL overlay. It would be, it would be a, a general plan amendment, right?
Into multiple parcels and put SPL on one or more of them.
Right. But this is not, you know, looking into the future. This is as the site, take the site as it exists today.
Right. And that's the same discussion that, that this, this commission had when we talked about the overlays. And then again, I thought, I want to say, a meeting later, that there's a myriad of different scenarios that could play out for any of these sites, whether or not they've been considered as a part of the overlay or not. And that's, that's really what we're talking about here. And I think that is something that's a great conversation for the concept review. I provided that information to Ted Moore. He's received it and is working through that process currently. Has not submitted at this point, but that's where we're at currently.
Okay.
At this point, Commission Chair, if we could, I know we've talked a lot about this 14-acre site. I would like to dive into and, and work through the, the housing element at this point for the rest of the day.
I, I think we have probably spent enough time on this one topic. Let's, let's move ahead. I think we're on, you said housing impediments. This would be on page 94 of 160 is where we're starting. I know I submitted a few comments, starting on page 96, I think.
And if I could, I'd like to have Jamie kind of give an overview of, of additional comments that I know the, the chair had, had provided to staff before the meeting. Additionally, if, if any of the commissioners have any comments on any of these, any of these pages or throughout the document itself, if they're, if they're substantive, kind of larger, I would say larger view questions, then yeah, let's have that conversation. If they're, this comment, can we add a comma here or like a errata type of, of information, then I'd say submit that to staff and we can make those, those, I would say, non-substantive kind of minor changes at this point, just so that we can move along this, this process. I don't, if it's page by page, I'd prefer not to do that, but if there are substantive changes that are page by page, then let's go through that.
Uh, no, I, I submitted a, a lot of errata, as you know, and I don't think we need to even talk about any of that. You can pick it up or throw it down. However, it, uh...
I, I, and I have a couple of errata things I'll give to you.
Okay.
And what page are we starting?
This is 94.
94. Can I just ask one question? On page 80, one of the policies says we'll promote city ADU programs with a goal of achieving 120, 120 ADUs within eight years. I just wondered where we got 20, 120.
It's, it's simple math. We take, yeah, we've taken the average in terms of, so, and I think Jamie can probably verify this, because I think she did, she did the numbers, but it was basically an average as we've been submitting to HCD on an annual basis.
It's an annual average and then, or it's an average over...
Jamie's speaking to this as well. Go ahead, Jamie.
Sorry. Um, it's the average number of ADUs you added from 2018 to 2020. And then, I think Chair Kulisy also had a question about, or a comment about how we were able to allocate ADUs into different income categories. And that is based off of a SCAG report that gives us assumptions for what we, what income categories we can assume ADUs will fall into in certain counties. So the income distribution of ADUs that we came up with was based on those SCAG assumptions that came up this year for Ventura County.
But, but the problem is, the ADUs are getting built, but they're not having any affordability requirements being applied to them. And I would say it's very unlikely that we will, because what, what do they, what's the benefit to the owner to agree to an income restriction?
Income restriction in terms of, I think by, by sheer size, HCD's saying that they are, they fall within the moderate category. Not necessarily within the low or very low or extremely low, obviously.
Yeah, right. Gotcha. Right. Understood.
Unless they choose to do that, which, the only, the only way you could potentially see that is if it's like a, a granny flat, essentially.
They'll be rented at market rate. I mean, that's, that's, that's what's happening and will happen. So without any...
And, you know, the 120 is sort of like icing on the cake as I read it.
It's extra supply.
Because the city has committed to space and committed to willingness to be flexible in regulations and, and requirements.
Right. That, that's actually a really good point.
To do more than we need to get HCD happy.
So if you're, and, and that's a, that's a really valid...
In terms of this policy, yeah. Yeah. Right. It's adding to the supply. It's not adding to the affordability.
And the idea is by adding to supply, if you have an abundance of availability, what happens to the price? It tends to drive it down. Tends to.
One, one could argue that the compliance program isn't really even adding to the supply because it's likely that people are already living there.
Correct. So it's legitimizing what is at, at current state illegal, bringing it into to non-conforming compliance.
Yep. 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 Okay. Uh, let's, let's dispense with the, with the other issue. I, I have to say right now that I would, I would share Commissioner Lottis's concerns about adding this piece to the list, not necessarily because of the entitlement that would accompany it, but because I am unsure as to what the entitlement would be applied to other than to the entire 14 acres. And I don't think we want to do that. So if we were to take a vote, from what I hear from, from my fellow commissioners, we would have a two-to-two vote, and a motion to add this parcel to the SPL list would fail. So let's move on to the rest of the report and, and take it on. Uh, let me see. I did have a question. If, if, if we're kind of flipping through to where I, where I think I had something that was substantive or material. On page 101, under retention of affordable units, it talks about the city continuing financial support of the Community Assistance Program, Rental Assistance Program administered by Help of Ojai. And my question is, is the city really doing this? And if so, how much is it spending annually to, to justify saying continue financial support?
I don't have a dollar figure, but I know that we, we continue to work with, with various groups.
So, so the city is actually giving money to Help of Ojai for this program?
I am not, I am not certain on what that dollar amount is, but believe that we are doing some sort of financial support.
Okay.
Yes. And that, that will...
That was my question.
That will continue.
I have a quick question on page 94, just real quick. And then, and then I want to flip back to 101. So what is, what is co-op housing? I mean, I know they have that in New York City, but, and that's where the tenants own the building. I guess that could happen here.
It's like, like a homeowners association for condos?
Within a building. I, I mean, I think a co-op is where, it's co-owned by the, by the tenants, but it differs from condos probably in terms of...
Right. There's...
Land ownership rights or something.
Exactly. There's various state laws that apply to cooperative housing, but, I mean, I can, maybe, I, maybe the consultant can weigh in here on, on exactly what the term refers to. However, cooperative housing does refer to a specific form of land tenure or property tenure.
Okay. I, I thought maybe it was so old-fashioned or something that, I didn't know if it was relevant today, but if it is, that's fine. That's, um, so back over to 101. My only comment on retention of affordable units, I mean, to me, that's, that's, that's one of the nuts we should try to crack, because to me, it means protection of existing, the existing rental stock that we have. And how can we do that? What, you know, I, I don't think we have the, we're not, we're not going to have the time to go into this and explore it, but I think that we really need to look at others. We really need to try to find other cities that have been visionary about this, creative. You know, how can we get more money put into the housing fund? Can we charge, you know, business activity? I mean, are, there's gotta be real, I'm just searching for really creative thinking about this. And hopefully, when we come back around to this, we can kind of really push and explore this a lot harder. And the, the other comment was on the anti-displacement. Um, there's a, there's a statement here. I think it's in our, it's in our existing housing element, but it did concern me. So we have a, let's see, that paragraph under anti-displacement. Let me see. "To moderate these trends and the consequence of displacement, the city's Ojai municipal code was amended in 2013 to institute a replacement housing requirement for the demolition, removal, or conversion of housing that is occupied by and affordable to target income households with the following exceptions." And the second exception is exempt the removal, demolition of non-conforming uses. And I, I just am not sure exactly what that means, but I'm wondering about existing, an existing apartment building that's, you know, was built quite some time ago. It's probably non-conforming in some respect. Is that an exemption and it could be torn down?
I think what it's referring to is, is units that are deemed unsafe. We have a compliance program currently for ADUs to bring those into compliance. I think even, like for instance, the apartments that we have currently as, as a stock, if they are non-conforming, which some of these are fairly old, I mean, it is an older stock. If you look at the housing element, a lot of this was built in the 50s, 50s, 60s, 70s, right? Majority of it. So there could be, but the reality is, is that there is this no net loss. These are exemptions to that, but we look at each of these on a case-by-case scenario in terms of how we're reviewing demolition. And we take it very, I mean, very seriously, obviously.
I guess I, I didn't, I didn't go check that part of the ordinance. So would it have to be a replacement? So if it was torn down, it was so, it was in such bad condition, it couldn't be rehabbed. I mean, I would like to have, see a focus on our housing element. Now, version two, or, you know, follow-up to this, a, a real focus on rehab and, and providing funds for that, seeking grants for rehabbing, bringing the energy use down, all those, all those kinds of things, making it more habit, just bringing it more up-to-date.
Can I speak to that just real quickly? Or go ahead?
Oh, yes. So is the replacement required to be within the city limits? That's where I was going.
Yes. Yes, for that, yes. And then to speak to the other, the other comment regarding some of the environmental and, and kind of dated concepts, I think one of the speakers tonight had spoken in regards to that. While we're looking for certification of the housing element, also understand that a part, as a part of this general plan update that we're doing, that's independent of this, kind of a, there's been this break-off of the housing element, really having a very firm deadline where the how, where the general plan update itself doesn't have quite as firm of a deadline. We're looking for a community input on a regular basis. Consistency with that general plan will need to be reviewed as a part of the housing element, right? So each of these programs, the entire housing element, we'll be reviewing that for consistency when changes are brought forward, proposed changes are brought forward with the general plan update for each of those elements. So we're looking for consistency throughout, including the housing element itself.
And to add to Lucas's point, the state law now requires mandating something called environmental justice as an incorporated, incorporated concept within a general plan. And so that's going to be incorporated into our, all the elements of the general plan, not just the housing. And so, you know, that's reflected in some of the things that the city's already done and is planning to do. And so that may be where this gets addressed.
Okay. Next page.
Um, on, on 104...
Could I speak to the colors here? I think everybody's probably seeing colors. I know it, I didn't speak to it earlier. I know that...
The colors?
Yeah, because there's, there's blue and there's red and there's kind of an off...
I couldn't read it.
Off-red as well. Just, just so the, the commission is aware, most of these blue are, are new revisions. That's what you're seeing, but not all of them. And some of the revisions are actually in red. That's a culmination of both the consultant making revisions and staff making revisions as well. So it, when I, when I was looking at it, it all read as red, but when you move it from one computer to the other, it tends to change the, the color coordination, depending on who's using what red line version. So it's, it was meant to be all red, but ended up coming out a rainbow of colors. So I apologize for that. It has very little to do with when things were revised, although blue does seem to be reading a little bit better, at least in terms of how I was reading it, but standard format is red.
Okay. I thought, I thought you were talking about the color of the, these tables. There's like the heading.
Red on, red on brown.
Red on brown doesn't, the, the white on brown is great.
Right.
So whatever happens, I, it's just...
It's a, it's a culmination of, I would say, probably four or five different computers going in and making revisions. So it's, it's not necessarily one source.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Uh, on 104, it talks about including continued financial support of a qualified fair housing service provider certified by HUD. And that is in bullets eight to 10. I said bullets eight to 10. Oh, no, the outreach and enforcement bullet lines eight to 10 is where that is. And I'm just wondering, is, is that sort of thing going on in the city right now? Is the city currently or planning in the future to financially support any qualified fair housing service provider certified by HUD? It, I don't think it's a complicated question, but in my mind, it, it, it's critical to saying, are those words properly in there?
So this is kind of a, this is a project-by-project consideration. So a fair housing service provider has to be certified by HUD prior to them applying to a project. So it's a, it's actually a distinction that HUD confers, not distinction, but it's a certification that HUD confers if a, if a fair housing sponsor meets certain criteria. And then they bring that to a project, and at that point, the city can make, but until there's a project pending before the city, and Lucas correct me if I'm wrong, but until there's a project pending before the city, this is something that, this the city is going to do, but there has to be a project that meets this criteria.
Understand that. My question was, is the city currently doing this anywhere, or is it planning to in the future anywhere?
I believe that's a question for staff as to whether...
It's, it's, it is open, obviously, to that option and willing to receive. Is it going on currently?
Hasn't, hasn't been done in the past, yes or no?
Uh, pre-force, pre-force cycle, yes.
It says continued financial support, which implied to me that there's something currently going on that the housing element says we need to continue doing.
Yes. So I, I think, I'm, I'm seeing where you're going, going with that. So you're, you're under, under the impression in terms of how that reads, that we already have something in place, something ready to go, or something...
Already working.
The reality is, is that we're continuing to be open, receptive to, to that type of... The reality is, is that we're continuing to be open receptive to, to that type of format. And I think Jamie and Amber can certainly jump in here as well.
Perhaps instead of continue, we might say consider.
Continue actually is the proper terminology here. Ojai does have a fair housing services provider. Because of, Ojai is part of the county CDBG program. The fair housing services provider is provided by the county. So, I, I can't tell you how much financial resources the city specifically contributes to that, but the fair housing services provider is provided by the county, not by Ojai itself.
Okay, so.
But Ojai is a contributor.
Does Ojai contribute to something? Or does the county spend this money and Ojai asks for some of it?
I, I believe the city, the city is a contributor, just like every other, just like every other city.
Then fine, then the words are fine.
It's the allocation.
That's what I was trying to understand. 108, I think we need to just take a quick look at that. It says in table row five, VMU mixed housing zoning. In the right-hand column, it says, the city has not yet amended, the city code has not yet been amended to recognize the VMU as a mixed-use zone, and I think that's incorrect.
What page are we on here?
This is page 106, and it's the row numbered five in the right-hand column.
108, I think, 108.
I'm sorry, 108.
So, that, that fix was actually made in the, the written version. This version does need to be adjusted to reflect that. So, that, that's, that's a correction that we can make.
And on page 109, in the row numbered nine, it talks about a program objective as being amending the zoning ordinance, or the, the code, to establish a 15% inclusionary requirement on new residential construction. Now, is that a new state requirement? Or is that in fact, something that the city is doing on its own, or neither?
I'm sorry, just to, to jump in here, and I apologize, hello everyone, my name is Amber Gregg, and I'm also with Veronica Tam and Associates, and I'm very happy to be here tonight. But I think what you're reading from is the review of past accomplishments, and so I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, right.
So, all of those things have already, it's a review of the last fifth cycles' accomplishments in that table. And so, that's what you're reading there, is your previous program objectives.
This speaks to a different time period. Look at the right-hand column, the city established an INLU fee option for inclusionary housing. Is that true? That's what I'm asking, because inclusionary housing came up at our last meeting, and I thought the answer that I got was, there is no such ordinance.
And that is correct. While there is very limited information on inclusionary housing, meaning it's in very, one very small section, it doesn't reflect the, the pieces that we're talking about here. So, the reality is, is while it's showing itself as a past accomplishment, I believe this is something that actually came to the, to the council, came to the kitchen, commission for discussion, but never went anywhere in terms of, of bringing it forward.
There is no 15% INLU fee.
No, there isn't, not in the code currently.
It's not clear to me that it's council's intent to establish one. Or ask the planning commission to recommend one.
As a program, that could be removed entirely as a recommendation going forward to HCD, if that's the will of the, of the commission tonight. Or looking at modifying it, identifying it as something that we would look at sometime in the near future. Even putting a timestamp on it.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I think the, the city council and the planning commission at city council's direction is ready to consider almost anything. But I, I hesitate to say that the city has done something that it hasn't done.
Yeah, and some of these programs are bigger ideas, and I have a feeling that that's what this was at that time, was a bigger idea in terms of, of inclusionary housing. I can't speak to how that was addressed, or, or what the, what the forethought was. I just know in terms of looking at it currently, it's not in the code currently.
Well, and just to address your point, Steve, that, it's a trick, well, let's see, the.
Steve works fine.
The 15% inclusionary housing requirement, the, the, that was the objective. What the city did do in, in section 10-2906 subsection B, or subsection C, the city said that the inclusionary differential requirements can be satisfied by a combination of one or more of the following means. On-site construction of affordable units on the site which is rezoned or reduced in density. Payment of a housing INLU fee, didn't specify the amount, or, or didn't specify a 15% requirement, but they said a payment of a housing INLU fee, or an equivalent action subject to city council review and approval, which could include a 15% inclusionary requirement. So, they left it open.
Yeah, so while it's not specified the 15%, it sounds like that was kind of a workaround.
Yeah, so there, there was three things that, that this, that they, that the city council back in 2013 did when it adopted this code amendment was basically one or more of the following ways of satisfying the differential, inclusionary differential requirements was. And so, while this objective is 15%, in theory, I would argue that yes, 15% is always on the table because of that last option, which is equivalent action subject to council review and approval.
You understand, I'm not speaking to the merits of the concept.
Right.
I'm trying to make sure that the housing element that goes in doesn't have any errors in it.
Right, and then, and this one, there is no error, because the objective was a 15% inclusionary requirement. What the city did do was adopt an INLU, the accomplishment was the city adopted an INLU fee option for inclusionary housing, which they did in 2013, when they adopted section 10-92, 10, 10-2906 subsection C.
The city then said, an INLU fee is one of three options for meeting a differential inclusionary housing requirement.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's, the problem is, as I said, I, I mean, there's absolutely no, there's no set amount. There, it's not based on some kind of, you know, consumer price index or anything. And there's no guidelines, I mean, it's just like a black hole. It's, it would concern me if we really had to decide what the INLU fee was, was, or should be.
Or recommend to city council, yeah.
Right, but this, this was an objective in the previous cycle.
Oh, yeah, no, in terms of.
This was the accomplishment, yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm just kind of, I'm listening to you and I'm going, uh-oh. I think we better attend to that in the, you know, sometime soon.
Exactly, and the commission is doing the Title X updates and review, which would be an excellent venue for this.
For us, right?
Yeah.
Always. Well, so, my only question was, is the statement in that right-hand column correct? Or should it be modified to be correct? That was my question.
Given what we've just heard from, from the attorney, I would say yes. The city established an INLU fee option, doesn't say that the, it established a fee amount.
Wasn't the only, and it wasn't the only option.
It wasn't the only option.
Okay.
Right.
That's fine, I just, the question was in my mind, yeah. All right, there's RADA. We keep coming back to what the, what the the allowable density is for affordable housing in terms of dwelling units per acre. We have seen 20, we have seen 20-plus, and we have seen no maximum. I don't remember if there was no minimum or not, I don't, minimum fell into one of the tables somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, state standard talks about the minimum being 15 units to the acre.
Being 15?
Yes.
Okay.
If Jamie or Amber could speak to density, our, our code currently has 20-plus. That is the way in which the code currently reads. It says a 20 and there's a plus.
Table says 20.
Right.
Just 20 flat.
Okay, so let me look at the code real quick, because I'm pretty sure it says 20-plus, because I was looking at it earlier today.
No, I'm, I'm not disputing it, I'm saying the, the housing element.
Oh, it says just the 20.
20-plus, or it says 20.
20.
You calculate how many spaces there are. I just want to make sure we get it right.
Is there a maximum density, Amber or Jamie, if you could speak to that?
If there's a maximum density that's identified within your zoning ordinance, it would be that. But with density bonuses, you can get additional density beyond that. So, if your density currently says 20 dwelling units to the acre, that would be your maximum. And then your density bonuses would be applied to that.
So, maybe 20-plus is what it should say everywhere.
It could be speaking to, and that could be something that we address through the zone, zoning code update as a part of this. Because I don't know necessarily if I'm looking at the code currently, that I felt like that path was clear in terms of density bonus. But I, I agree with that idea that Amber's just talking about, because the density bonus code section's going to have to be updated. There are new laws and regulations that we currently have in play that are inconsistent.
Well, then maybe, maybe saying 20-plus everywhere throughout this housing element is the safest thing to do. Saying no maximum is probably, in logical terms, the same.
I, I would say.
Plus goes all the way to infinity.
No, no maximum, there is a ceiling to it, and I think the ceiling is a combination of what the density is versus what density bonus, and any other aspects that we're looking at here that you could pile on.
Yeah, and that maximum is going to change as we.
I hesitate to say no ceiling, because there is.
New state laws.
Yeah, with something like this, there is a ceiling.
Yeah, we need to be careful of that.
The site will determine that.
Because I saw no maximum in one of the tables, and I thought that was inappropriate.
Right.
There are pending bills at the moment that clarify this, but again, I don't know which bills will meet the governor's signature and which, which will get through committee, and so I would, I would, I would agree that we, we don't. Perhaps I would recommend, I guess, that we don't, we set it at 20-plus, as, as you said.
Leave it at 20-plus, that gives us a lot of wiggle room.
That, yes.
Yeah, okay. Page 112, it says, continue the city's housing rehabilitation loan program. Is there such a thing? Is the city making loans to people to rehabilitate homes?
So, just to start off, we do have an affordable housing fund, if you will. And whether or not, I don't, I don't believe we actually have a, a fund that can be used for rehabilitation. And Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't think it's anywhere on any of our websites as it relates to that, or am I wrong?
You're correct.
Okay.
There have been funds issued on past affordable housing.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, I mean, not that we're partaking in it, but I thought CBD, CDBG had, has a poss, there are funds available for rehab.
Yeah, there's already programs in play through CDBG, so that's, that's a true statement.
We're already getting, we're already getting money, and that's being allocated to certain things, which is not rehabbing.
A certain amount, and then we can distribute based on certain programs.
So, you're saying there, there is money coming from the county to the city, which the city then loans to people for the purpose of rehabilitation?
Yes, that is, that has always been available through, through CBDG. That, that is actually a true statement, from city to city. Ojai's no different.
I had not heard of such a program.
We are doing that, then.
We have that available, I'm not saying that we're doing it currently, it's available.
Okay, okay.
And Lucas, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the county administers those programs because you make up an urban group under the county, because Ojai's so small. And so, typically, there are larger programs under the county, because they're the ones that oversee the CDBG program. And so, that's how those are distributed.
Right, and I think Jamie was speaking to one of those programs earlier in terms of, of being kind of an umbrella, the county acting kind of as an umbrella.
Yeah, that's correct, so they do it on, on the city's behalf.
Right.
I just have a, a one-word.
Please, go ahead.
Comment, back, I guess I had all my comments on page 101. At the very top, policy, I think it's policy H12. We have some wishy-washy language, and so we say, "The city will encourage energy-efficient construction in all new and rehabilitated dwelling units, and actively promote sustainable construction." Could we? Can't we make it require? Or, isn't there something stronger than encourage that's really, that's really bad? I mean, you know, the, the use of energy in our, in our buildings throughout the city, of which large, a large component is residential, you know, is like 40% of our, you know, CO2 footprint. The rest of it is cars, and the cars are all going to electric. So, our use of energy in our buildings is really significant. And we have to be, the state, the state goal say to be, you know, neutral on our CO2 emissions by, I think it's 2040.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to, to something potentially.
Another word?
Stronger than encourage, but I just want to be, I want to be careful not to, not to go down the road of require.
Right.
If it's something that is, that has a little bit more punch to it, I'm.
I mean, we do have the state, we have the state energy code, so we have that, that's a requirement.
Right.
And just on that point of requirement creates a, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a legislative term, is that will require. It's, it's got to correspond with something that's already, you know, the city council has done. I, I mean, I, I agree with the.
I, I know, policy language needs to be strong, and encourage is not strong.
And, and, yeah, I agree with the, the policy. I would just point out that the city has adopted a reach code on new construction. And so, that does apply, however, the require is sort of a, a broad term that there are some buildings that, for example, may not, the city may, there may be a situation, and I'm just, you know, I can't speak to a specific situation, but there may be a situation where the city simply can't impose its requirements.
Preservation.
Exactly, and so, require perhaps would, you know, and I, and I understand the need for stronger policy language, but policy language has to reflect.
The city will promote. I don't know, I suppose that's the same thing as encourage, I don't know.
I, I, you want to say strongly encourage. Vice Chair Nolan. Yes, please, ma'am.
Muted.
I had unmute. So, this kind of chase, I know this is going back a little bit to page 75. This is the energy conservation opportunities, you know, building regulations and land use practice. They mentioned up the green building guidelines, is that something the city has produced or adopted? Or is that a state guideline?
There it says promote, okay.
Page 75.
So, in that one, I think they're talking about the California Green Building Code, which is administered through building and safety under the building permits.
Yeah, it wasn't clear, and I wasn't sure, so. Yeah, maybe it's another promote here. Yes, the goal of promoting.
Complying with state guidelines, then maybe we are promoting.
You could add an adjective to it, or an adverb to say strongly.
strongly encourage.
Or aggressively encourage. And I, I just want to point out that the, the green building, the green building guidelines, the city has incorporated the state codes by reference, and so those are already active within the city, yeah.
And I, that was my note that I had on the side, was this the state guideline, and I wasn't sure. Is this Cal Green that you're referring to?
Yes, California Green Building Code.
Yeah, it might be good to actually state what that is. I mean, maybe that's just for clarification. I mean, I'm familiar with that, but it wasn't when I read this, that didn't quite register, and I wasn't sure that you were referring to that. Thank you.
Chair, maybe you could say shall meet the city and state codes, you can't say.
I think we want to stay away from the word shall, just, we, we already had that conversation of being consistent with the shall versus the will.
All these paragraphs are commitments by the city, so it's will.
Well.
Shals are required.
Every, every city uses, mostly uses shall in the, in their general plan policies.
Will meet city and state codes.
And I, I don't, I'm not really happy about it, but, but I actually see shall and will as equivalent, basically, when it comes to it. But I will say, I will say, throughout the state of California, when there are strong land use. throughout the state of California, when there are strong land use, uh, strong policies in the general plan, it's shall. You shall do this and that's the way, that's the, that's the custom. So.
Well, and if the city is levying a requirement on a developer or on a citizen within the city, then shall is appropriate because the city is levying a requirement. But this is the city saying, this is what the city is going to do.
Yes, which shall does also, but, but this, I mean.
Okay.
Anyway, it's a, it's, it's, it's an argument. It's over and that's fine.
Well, I'm not sure it's over because if the city has already adopted and said that they're going to be following the state guidelines, the Cal Green guidelines, then, then you shall, any new development shall.
Or we could say that the city, the city will follow state guidelines on energy efficient construction. Or will enforce state guidelines?
And you could say something to the effect of.
Enforce and implement all, all, all relevant state guidelines on energy efficient construction.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
That's better.
Okay, like that.
That just mandates the city to follow state law.
Which they're already agreed to, but, but now just further.
Which is already an obligation of the city, but I, I think it, it solves the, uh, need for stronger language.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the ambiguity, yeah.
Um, Jake, haven't heard from you. Any, anything that you want to hit? We're about page one fifteen or so.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay.
So, so I do have a question of staff though. Um, so what is the direction from council on addressing climate change? I mean, are we, we're really, we're still not really doing very much, you know, in terms of really being thorough about it. I mean, is there, you know, what are we doing about it?
I, I can't speak to what council's giving in terms of direction at this point. Uh, the reach code, I think, is a good example of, of moving forward. That's one piece to, that's one piece to the puzzle.
Yeah. Well, what about expanding the reach code? We don't even have a policy in there that talks about that, expanding the reach code to address remodels, you know, other kinds of development. When it's, right now it's for new development and, um, I can't remember at the, are we exempting ADUs or are we including them? I'm not sure.
Certain ADUs are being exempted, yes.
So again, it's, it's a, it's a loophole and it's a big one. And, um, there are ways to really, uh, broaden the reach code requirement. And I think we should, you know, this is the place to do it where we have a policy that says that's what we're going to do. So I'm just pointing out, we're, we're ignoring, we're basically ignoring a huge issue. The issue of our lifetime, the state says it's a state goal that we are going to be, um, uh, neutral in terms of our carbon footprint by twenty forty. This, this general plan goes up and, you know, goes at least to twenty forty and a little beyond. And, um, we need to be, in my, I mean, I just think we need to be way more aggressive and thorough in terms of how we're integrating, what we're doing on, with each of these elements in terms of climate, um, climate change. Unless we want to follow up with a climate action plan later. I, I mean.
Commissioner Lottis, on that point, um, you know, the, right now, like, this is for the consideration of the housing element. And I mentioned the, the fact that there's environmental justice as a state law requirement, uh, of incorporating into general plans. Sometimes it's a standaloneous element, sometimes it's, it's, um, placed through other elements, it's reflected through other elements. Commission always has the opportunity to either, individual commissioners can go to council and, and, uh, and make public comment. Or, uh, or, you know, the, or, you know, ask council, uh, commission can vote to ask council to consider, for example, a revised reach code or, and then council can come back with a recommendation that, uh, that commission do that. But that's kind of the, that would be the venue for that.
Yeah.
At this point, you know, the, these policies are all forward looking. And then, you know, if commission wanted to, they could say that, you know, we've, we have this policy that speaks to certain environmental or climate goals is, or whatever. And we wish, you know, you know, you could ask council to, or ask council to put on, you know, put on the agenda or, you know, a member of council could put on the agenda, a climate action plan that kind of furthers these policies. And if that were to happen, I, you know, ideally in the seventh cycle, you would see a similar table as we saw in, uh, appendix A, that says that, you know, this is what the, the, the city eventually did. But it doesn't necessarily, this is, it's, this is the, the, kind of the, the skeleton by which the city will, will take further actions, um, in the future. And that kind of fills out the right side of that table.
I, you know, I just don't mind doing the, I, I understand the need for this pro forma thing that we're calling a housing element, but there's way more to, way more to affordability, uh, cons, energy consumption in terms of our housing stock. And, um, we're, I just, you know, we talk about it a little bit, but it just seems like there's, it's, we just don't go very far, so.
And, and I, I think the venue, the proper venue for that is a detailed ordinance that's, goes through and kind of addresses those concrete details and issues. Uh, because this is simply policymaking and while policy has the guiding principle, it has no, it has no.
No, I, I, I know, but when you have the policy there, then you really are, it's, the foundation is laid for you to take the specific actions.
Right, but the, the, but then, yeah, the, the foundation, but I think, you know, you know, that, but that's the appropriate venue is, I guess, the ordinance, which, you know, which will eventually, you know, yeah.
If we can get back to doing the Title X update.
Yeah.
There'll be a myriad of opportunities to suggest new language to city council.
I, I just will make a final statement. I, we really could do much better in terms of addressing climate change. And the start, starting point is the general plan. That's it.
You're Felicity?
Oh, Kathy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say I agree with Commissioner Lottis. I'm frankly, um, a little surprised that we didn't get anything from council as far as the general plan, you know, as far as a vision and anything to do with, um, climate change. And, um, I'm just going to say for the record, I think, I think we need to do something about it and it needs to be included. And, you know, they're going to take it or they're going to leave it. But my opinion, we're missing a big opportunity. And this is, um, a major issue across the planet, not just here. And it's pretty obvious what the issues are here in, um, the Ojai Valley and the city of Ojai. So, yeah, I'm, I'm a little disappointed.
Right, and this is, this is supposed to be the visionary document for the next twenty years. This is exactly the time period that we are supposed to where the rubber hits the road. And, and we don't have, we don't have much more chance to kind of really get things right.
Absolutely, so the.
We have to do it.
Yeah, and just to stay focused on the housing element, like I was saying before, while we're looking for, uh, for this to get certified, it will have to be consistent with the rest of the elements in terms of, so there will be a cursory review, um, at a later date. So we'll have an opportunity to kind of throw them all together and see and make sure that they all mix together correctly. So know that through the general plan update process, this is going to also be a part of that review. Not necessarily saying that it gets reviewed.
I get confused.
I know, the, the confusion is.
Guiding principles for the whole plan.
Well, that's.
Yeah, what happened to that?
That's the bigger piece. That's going back to council. We're, we've already, um, scheduled that. They'll be, that'll be either the first or second meeting and.
Pass that.
Right, we passed it on to council, but it didn't, it didn't get adopted.
We had a lot of discussion on that. I want to say four hours plus. So there was definitely a deep dive with that, a lot of, a lot of conversation.
So I, so this goes to the state, negotiate, maybe come back with the, and so then come back with the public hearing and all that on something that they agree on.
They, meaning HCD, yes.
It gets adopted, so then we work on the other elements. And then we don't really circle back around to the housing element though, do we?
We look at consistency. So in terms of doing the deeper dive that we're doing right now, no. In terms of consistency, if there's pieces to that puzzle that need to be folded in to this housing element, that'll be an opportunity.
Okay, all right.
I'm up to one thirty-five if anyone has something before that. Kathy or Jake? Kathy? Okay. I'm, I'm just curious where, where this figure came from and why there's a big wide white thing in the middle of it. There's nothing in the key about that because white is city slash town boundaries. And we know that isn't it. And I just. And part of it's in the city and part of it's out. So I'm, I'm hoping we can figure out where that data came from and fix it. Uh, consultants?
Yeah, I can take a look at the, this is from HCD. They have a affirmatively furthering fair housing mapping tool. Um, this could be a block group, uh, that doesn't have sufficient data for reporting. Um, but I will, uh, check and make sure I include, if there is insufficient data, I will, uh, make sure I include that.
One thirty-six talks about entitlement areas residence. Last paragraph. That's the first time this phrase has come up. I don't know what it means because I don't know what an entitlement area is. And I want to make sure that we do this right. If we're introducing a new term, we should define it. If it's not a new term, I don't know where else it is. And I still don't understand what it means. Is an entitlement area, an area where there's any particular entitlement? SPL is only one. VMU is an entitlement, if you want to look at, at it that way. Uh, density bonuses are entitlements. So I'm just not sure what that means. Where did, where did it come from?
Yeah, this is a mistake on my part. This should be urban county. So, uh, CDBG of Ventura County jurisdictions and the unincorporated county. That's what this applies to.
So it's, it's a defined term for outside the city.
Um, it's, it's a term for, for this specific data, it's from the, uh, US. It's from HUD, um, and they don't have, uh, this data for small jurisdictions like, um, Ojai. So, uh, instead they have the urban county, which includes Ojai, but also includes, um, small Ventura jurisdictions like Santa Paula. Um, uh, and then in addition to the small jurisdictions, the unincorporated area. So it's not, it's not, I should, I will add more to this section clarifying that. Um, but it's not, uh, uh, these numbers in the table you see in, uh, table four. Um, that's not, uh, indicative of Ojai alone. That's all the jurisdictions that fall into that.
And I'll grant you, I'm easily confused, but on this one I was confused.
So can we just, let me just tease this out a little bit more.
Yep.
Jamie, I know you and I talked beforehand. Is there some sort of correlation with tract, with, with the census tract in, in regards to what we're talking about here? Was there, in terms of this data, in terms of how it was extracted, anytime you're looking at HUD, a lot of times they're looking at census tracts. And those don't line up with city boundaries. Is that kind of what we're looking at here? I, I would, I would encourage you, Jamie, to kind of look at that a little bit closer because I'm, I'm kind of curious myself, yeah.
Right.
We were talking about that at one point, I think, last week or the week before.
So some of this data is broken up into tract data, but it's most, mostly, um, uh, uh, American Community Survey and data provided from HCD. Um, the, there's only two, I think there's only two, uh, well, in addition to the HUD CHAS data, I suppose. Um, all, most HUD data applies to jurisdictions as a whole, whether that be a county or a city. Um, HUD does not typically break their data down into, uh, uh, pieces smaller like a tract or a block group.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, one thirty-eight, the table, it's zero dash six right now. I'm sure it's supposed to be B dash six or C or D dash six. That confused me a bit. But you've got a list of census tract numbers, I think that's what it says. Census block. Groups. Um, is there any, is there any way to put some geographical meaning into that? Because right now, anybody except maybe you or somebody from HUD, reading this, it wouldn't make any sense.
The, um, resource, uh, resource areas by block group described in table six are depicted in figure nine, but it's by census tract. So, um, but the, in the figure it's tract and in the table it's, um, block group. So, um, I can add to the narrative and link those, uh, ideas more properly so we know that that's the same.
The, the map.
You know what might be helpful with that?
And readable, uh, would certainly convey more of a message, I think.
Yeah, either using the numbers within the map itself might actually help to provide an easier link between the two.
Yeah.
Rather than, I mean, the colors are fine, but I think the, the numbering would be helpful.
Um, okay.
It may just be my seventy-four-year-old eyes, but I couldn't read any of the maps. If you made them into turn pages and twice as big. That might work.
Jamie, can you work with, with your GIS team and see if there's a way in which we can clean up some of these maps to make them readable to a certain degree? Or are we limited in terms of what we're looking at here?
Yeah, I can talk to, um, our GIS team and, and see what we can do. Um, we're a, a bit limited in our capabilities there just because the layers with, um, like the opportunity areas layer, for example, that's coming straight from HCD. Um, I think we can maybe like reformat a little bit. Um, I'll, I'll talk to him and see what we can do.
Okay. I, I don't want to, you know, go to a lot of trouble with inserting numbers on maps and, and things like that. If it, if it isn't going to convey a clear message. If we can make the maps at least big enough to be readable so that both the map and the legend, right now, you know, even with a magnifying glass, the, the legend is right on the edge of not readable. Um, if we could do that, that probably solves most of the problem.
So one of the things, Jamie, in terms of talking and, and Amber as well, going back and talking to your GIS team, you may be able to take some of these, some of these maps and just turn them sideways and go, and go landscape eleven, eight and a half by eleven. I know that sounds really simple. It messes up the pagination, obviously. Um, but the reality is, is that it puts.
Turn pages in proposals all the time.
Yeah, and I know it's, it's.
Not asking for an eleven by seventeen.
But it makes it, I would, I would see it making it much more legible than what we're seeing currently.
Right, yeah.
And I, I have to compliment you on giving us maps of the city from so many different aspects. Because it really says, i- if you go from one map to another to another, you can see that there are definite differences in different parts of the city. And I think that's useful to people if they ever read the housing element. I'm not sure how many will. It's just that you can't read it right now, so.
Sure, yeah, we'll, we'll get that fixed up.
Vice Chair Nolan or Commissioner Swift? Any other things that you've picked up here that, uh? That we need to look at?
Maybe, but I'll, I'll send those in as, um, uh, Lucas had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Things that were prior to the pages we've been covering tonight.
Thank you. And Commissioner Swift, if you have the same, if there's some errata that you're seeing in there.
Yep.
You go ahead and send that over if you can.
Any errata that you have is, it's tedious but straightforward to fix, so. And I got through, got through about sixty percent of it in terms of looking for acronyms and so, who knows? so, who knows? That's really.
Well, we do have a glossary of terms.
Yeah.
So that glossary can certainly grow.
Yes.
That's all the comments that I have, beyond the, the other comments that I already gave How about, Vice Chair Nolan, do you have additional comments on this current revision of the housing element?
No, I just mentioned that I would, I don't have any additional comments on this portion, but I had, you know, a few things in the beginning, but I will send those into Lucas.
Terrific. And Commissioner Lottis, is the same?
Same, I had a few.
Yeah, okay.
All, all de minimis comments can simply, yeah, just send them to Lucas, and then the recommendation would be approval with consideration of all de minimis comments.
Right, right. And Commissioner Swift, any, any, any additional thoughts on what we've slogged through tonight?
No, not tonight.
Have we additional business to cover? Do you feel like, between the material you've already gotten from us and the promise of new material, that there's enough to work with there?
Yes. I, I would also like to just thank the commission for doing a deep dive into this. And if we could all just take a deep breath and know that you will see this again. After HCD's had their way with it.
All right, very good. The, the last item on our agenda, then, is words of wisdom from our city council liaison.
We have to make a recommendation, a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
So, at this point, the appropriate action would, would be to recommend that the housing element, as considered by the commission, and including with consideration of the de minimis comments submitted by members of commission, be forwarded to the city council.
So moved.
We have a second on that motion? Well, I'll second it for discussion purposes. Any, any discussion of the motion? All right, then, Sherry.
Might I also add in clarification that, that also we'll begin the process of sending it to HCD for their comments at this point, and start that sequo process?
When, when you're finished with the next revision of the housing element, will there be a clean, that is to say, all changes incorporated, even an electronic copy that would be available to the commissioners?
Yes, when we send it to HCD, it will be a clean copy. So yes.
Okay.
And that, that copy, I can certainly make available through our, on our general plan update website as well.
I know redline, redline versions are ugly, but they're necessary. They're just very hard to read, and so, once we get done, it would be great to have a clean copy to read. Thank you. Sherry, would you call Raul on the motion?
Chair Colce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
She's muted.
You're muted.
I had my fan on, so I had it unmuted. I'm going to say yes, because I know we needed to move it forward, but I also, for the record, wanted to state that I'm disappointed that we didn't have further discussion on adding the 14-acre parcel. Only bit at that.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Four zip. All right, now, words of wisdom from our city council liaison.
Tongue-in-cheek words of wisdom. Look, I, I want to ask a couple of questions, I didn't want to interrupt the flow with of, of staff. Just quick, just, you know, you don't have to answer tonight, but what happens when you adopt a housing element, you get it certified, and then within that cycle, the city engages in any annexations? What happens then? Do you have to get an amendment to the housing element and be recertified?
Anytime that you have an annexation, it would, it would require you to do an annex, or, it would require a general plan amendment and zoning.
Okay, got that, and that would be a submission to HCD. Second.
Changing the size of the city, so.
Yeah, I, I just wondered what.
You're changing the boundaries of the land use map as well as the zoning map, so both of those.
You might not have to actually submit it until the next cycle deadline, though.
That was the technical question I was asking.
It depends on, on what you have going on with LAFCO when you're doing that.
Okay.
It really becomes a negotiation piece at that.
Becomes a LAFCO matter, okay. Second question is, how is HCD going to deal with all the rest of the world, redistricting and everything else, in that they're probably going to have the 2020 census figures at the census block level finalized while they're doing these reviews? What happens if the figures from the state that are estimates, basically, until they're recalibrated to the 2020 census, don't match? What does HCD do about that?
I have.
Which could be a real possibility.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that I necessarily want to answer that tonight, but I know, I, I believe that our consultant is, is working through that, not only in this city, but in every city. HCD provides a lot of the data that we end up using. As it gets recalibrated.
Right.
Those numbers could very well change. The reality is that.
Calibration models are anchored on every 10-year.
Right, and you're, I think you're even seeing this.
And, like, what we're going to do with redistricting is still an open question at this point.
Sure, and, and not only that, but the resources that you're seeing with each of these data tables are different. You're not seeing a consistent data table, and that, that hasn't changed in, in any, I don't know that I've seen a cycle where we've seen consistent data tables. They're, they're taking ranges from different.
Okay.
Marriots, so just know that.
I don't want to get too deep in the weeds in it, but the federal government's putting us all on a real pickle right now, with the delay in releasing the 2020 census data, on so many fronts, you know, so. Anyway, I just wanted to compliment the citizens who came to express the issue about, this 14-acre issue is a absolutely, it raises a lot of issues that need to be considered from so many different angles. It's a very legitimate issue to seriously consider. I don't think any of us, in it, in it, in, in seeing this advancing of the housing element, think that this issue is something that is going to go away, or needs to be, you know, not carefully looked at. I think, you know, when you start looking at the scale involved versus involves goals other than affordable housing, even though affordable housing is, is the overriding consideration, I think that we all need to get creative about handling that situation. And I really appreciate that we were able to have a good thorough discussion on that, and I don't, I just really want to let the citizens that came and did their research not kind of walk away thinking that, that their, their work was, was dismissed in any way. It's, it's part of the process and will be seriously considered.
And I'd have to agree with you. Anything that I have said, and I presume anything that any other commissioner has said tonight about that particular parcel and the idea of putting it on the list, is still subject to us seeing what a proposal would be.
Right, and getting at, looking at the broader.
See the evidence, see the testimony, and, and we'll handle it like we would any other request.
Well.
Understanding that, that chunks of it are, are not going to be within the commission's purview, but we can recommend it to the city council for zoning changes, for subdivision, for whatever.
There's some potential very productive partners.
I, I think.
That, that I think we all need to seriously take into account.
From what I've had knowledge of up to now, letters or discussion in the paper or whatever, it sounds to me like a rare opportunity for the city. And I think the commission needs to see the details.
And the council as well, and the communities.
And come to an informed decision.
Absolutely. So anyway, thank you, planning commission, virtual, in person. I just chose to be in person tonight, because I just love it. Being in person again, and, thank you for all the time.
Like speaking into a, into a membrane like that.
Oh, I'm ready to see that go, too.
Yeah.
You know, if you think about it, there's all this airflow around it, so what is it really doing, scientifically speaking? Yeah.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the, the kind words for the commissioners. This, this is hard work, and people are, are going through arguably straightforward but extremely tedious processes, and doing a lot of hard thinking to, to make the recommendations that the commission does. And I can't thank my fellow commissioners enough for taking the job seriously, period. So thank you all. And seeing no other business before the commission, at 8:22, the meeting's adjourned.